Okay, it looks like we have a quorum. So I'm gonna call this regular September 14, 2020, Board Meeting to Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Kelly, do you want to do roll call?
Mr. Casley out.
I think we might not be muted. They're not muted.
Don't see him. Are you on?
Ms. Flynn?
She's here.
Well, I see Ms. Flynn. I don't hear her.
I saw her get on.
She's here. Oh, there's Ms. Mr. Casley out. Badler. Mr. Sang.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Better bit?
She messes us.
I don't know if I'm connected or not.
Will you hear it, Craig?
Okay, good, thanks.
And, Miss.
Looks like a listen. Are trying to find back on. Can I have a motion to adopt change order of the business on the agenda?
Anthony first.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Anthony White, second. Are there any questions? This is just because we're not following the board policy of the order of our agenda. Moving public comment earlier has been meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
I think everyone's in favor. I don't know about everyone else, but it just seems like connection is really rough tonight.
Is my audio working now?
It is. We can hear you now.
Okay.
So move on to open to the public. If you would like to speak, if you don't mind putting your name in the chat, they can call on you. Is there anyone interested in speaking from the public? If you're not able to put your name in chat, you can raise your hand or just say, I'd like to speak. I see none. I'm gonna move on from there. We're about to go into our workshop, but I just wanted to let, I see that we have a couple of our applicants for school board here to fill our vacancy. Thank you for coming. We're gonna have you speak during our unfinished business. So that'll be your opportunity to make a statement. Our workshop tonight is gonna be with John Giometta, our Director of Athletics, to talk about the latest with Matt. John?
Thank you. As we know, it's been quite an interesting series of events going back to the spring. However, we do have some more information. You can hear me all right, correct? Any problems? Okay. We do have some more information, thank goodness, about how we are gonna be able to proceed with athletics for this upcoming school year. So I put together a brief PowerPoint presentation on some of the changes and how we are going to be able to adhere to the different guidelines from the state and how we're gonna make this happen effectively and safely for our athletes. So if we start scrolling through here. So right now, we have three sports that are going to be offered for the time being that are part of our Beacon programs, those being soccer for boys and girls, girls tennis, and girls cross-country. If you look at the next slide that we have here, some pretty drastic changes, you know, compared to what we've been doing in the past. The first change that you may have seen is that New York State is actually coming up with a fourth athletic season. It's called Fall Two, which starts on March 1st. And all of our high-risk sports that we typically offer during the fall season are being moved to this point in time. So you'll see that football, volleyball, and cheer are gonna be moved to this point in time, starting March 1st. It's not during the spring season, like I said. It's actually a fourth season that New York State developed. It's supposed to be going from March 1st to somewhere around April 19th to May 1st, depending on how many contests we're going to be able to get in. And then after that, spring season is actually going to start around May 1st. For girls swimming, I sent out a letter to the community regarding the sports that were gonna be offered. However, come to find out, girls swimming, there's gonna be a vote this week on whether or not that should also be moved to the March 1st or Fall Two season. So the status of that is to be determined. We're waiting for more guidance from the state or from the section, I should say, before we can give an answer to that. In addition, for modified sports, there's a motion to have Section 1 hold off on offering fall modified sports throughout all the schools in district, or excuse me, schools in Section 1. The hope is that once we get to the winter season, we're able to then implement the modified sports. There was also talk about moving this to possibly the Fall Two season, depending on how things go in the next few months or so. The one thing that we've been talking about with my colleagues along with this is that... Excuse me, you can hear me, correct?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Sorry. So one thing that we've been talking about with my colleagues is offering intermurals that are school-based. So basically, we would offer the sport to our modified students. They continue to practice and they can work with our coaches. And then we can set up things such as inner-squad scrimmages among our students so that we can at least get out in the fields and start working on our skills so that we don't fall behind. Next slide, please. So some season details, as of right now, varsity and JV sports, they're scheduled to begin practicing on September 29th. Modified sports, we were initially planning on rolling them out on October 5th. However, we are going to wait to see what the section decides this week, so we are holding off on that opening date. Some details about the season, there will be 10 practices needed before the first contest. So in theory, looking at the schedule, it looks like our first games or contests are possible. Only section and league contests are going to be scheduled to start the season and based on geographic. So basically, each of the schools are set into a league. The league alignment is based off of geographic. So for instance, schools such as Poughkeepsie, Our Lady of Lourdes, Peak Skill would be grouped into our league. The section is deciding to only schedule league contests at this point in time to try to isolate the different types of contests we're having, as opposed to us going down to, say, Pelham or another district like that, that's pretty far out of our geographic range. We're scheduled to have family ID open for our athletes for JV and varsity sports tomorrow. We do need to open this sooner than later to give our nurses time to review the physicals and other medical information to get them appointed or to ensure that they're going to be safe for the upcoming season. Next slide, please. There was a document that New York State Public High School Athletic Association was able to create for us, who were trying to roll back with athletics, and it involves how we are going to meet social distancing guidelines, so on and so forth. And then I put a few of the highlighted topics into the PowerPoint here. Number one is going to be the health screening that's going to occur for each athlete before attending practice. We do have the online health screening availability here in the district. And we would simply ask that our students who were remote, who are gonna be participating in extracurriculars, would simply fill out this survey before they tend to practice. Same thing as showing up to school, they would show their coach their phone to show and that they were approved. And then the student-athlete would be eligible to begin practicing. The visiting opponents are responsible for screening their athletes. Each of the school districts is in charge of their screening criteria. Another thing that we'll be doing is screening of officials, coaches, and essential staff each day. So every time an official come onto our campus, our athletic trainer would put him through a screen or her through a screening process to ensure that everybody was safe to go. Another big topic is being able to practice in cohorts or pods. Basically, we're trying to break up the amount of students that we have at one time. So an example of that would be having, being able to practice with your remote students compared to your hybrid students or something along those lines, just to simply limit the amount of students that we're having in one place at one time. Now, this could be a little bit difficult, especially when you're trying to do a large team practice or event. However, we are pretty adamant about coming up with a type of schedule to try to spread out the number of athletes that we're gonna have on our field and our facilities around our staff. Face coverings, we should be worn at all times by our athletes, coaches, essential staff, anybody who's gonna be working our games and our contests. We are encouraging everybody to wear their face mask throughout all the course of our practices and games as much as possible. The number one concern that I personally have is a relapse with COVID. If that does happen, we would be shut down, so we're gonna do everything in our power, at least, to ensure that we're keeping our students as safe as possible. Next slide, please. Some other items, no sharing of equipment such as water bottles, towels, things that are typically shared amongst the athletes. We're gonna ask athletes to bring their own, or we can give them one at the beginning of the season for them to use for the duration. Disinfecting of equipment when possible. For the three sports that we have offered right now, one being cross-country, where there should be no sharing of equipment regardless. The next being tennis, which the student has their tennis racket, we would only have to disinfect the tennis ball that they were using in between serves. And the other being soccer, once again, the only piece of equipment that they should be touching or sharing would be the soccer ball. And we do have a plan to make sure that we're disinfecting these items before they're actually put into gameplay. Spectator status is to be determined right now throughout the district, or excuse me, throughout the section that we have. Our number one concern, I can say, is making sure that our student-athletes are safe. And that being said, if we have to limit the amount of spectators that we're having at our contest to ensure that's gonna happen, it's something we're willing to do. There were guidelines that came out saying that each student can, or excuse me, each athlete can have up to two spectators per athlete. So if there was a team of 10, you can, in theory, have 20 spectators. However, we are discussing as a section how we're gonna most effectively make this work, and once again, to keep our athletes safe. Six-foot distance requirement between athletes as much as possible. The official ruling is that accidental contact only should be happening. That's the only time students should be come within six feet. And there are sports-specific recommendations provided by New York State. A couple of examples of these are no spitting in gloves to moisten the gloves for a soccer goalie, no use of a drop ball, which would require an athlete to actually hold the ball. They are looking at it sport by sport to make sure that we're limiting the amount of contact as much as possible. Next slide, please. Some other information. Given our high school schedule, I was able to speak with Mrs. Soto, and she is making arrangements for high school athletes with travel restrictions to be able to work in our cafeteria with a teacher or staff member if they do have some travel issues from the end of the high school school day and from the beginning of practice times, which would typically be happening later in the afternoon. Only essential personnel will be authorized at events for the time being, which we consider administration, security, chaperones, who would be in charge of running the clocks or announcing, so on and so forth. Indoor practices and workouts are not permitted at this point in time. We are hoping that the regulations ease so we can get our student-athletes back into the weight room. And physicals for athletes will be accepted from last school year into this school year, which aids with, you know, letting parents be able to utilize the materials that they already had from the previous year. Next slide. I was able to, a couple of resources that are most important. Number one is the New York State Public High School Association website here, which you can then access those return-to-play documents and the various rules and regulations that they've been coming up with. A lot has changed. It's not as typical as it has been in the past, but they do do a very good job thoroughly explaining the changes. And the other is the New York State Department of Health Guidance, which is referred to in that return-to-play document multiple times. So if you want, I'm sure we have some questions or inquiries here, but please feel free to ask or do whatever we need. I wanna try to make sure that we're all comfortable with doing this and that we get our kids back as quick as possible.
John, with the screening, the screening process for officials and people who are visiting, is that something that's standard? Or is it something that each, I mean, each district has to make up their own rules for that? And is there coordination among the different districts to ensure that it's meeting at least a certain safety standard as much as possible?
It's going to be done by district, and the district has the choice or option on how they are going to do the screening process. One thing that we're talking about is making sure that we're on the same page as much as possible, especially when we start contests. So for instance, mask wearing is a big topic of conversation right now. Ensuring that each school understands the importance of it and that we're all able and willing to adhere to the guidelines. So it is going to be done by individual school districts.
Most of the screening, most districts, just from what I know, are pretty much using the same screening instrument or close to the same screening instrument. But it was, it was, it was not a standardized thing by the state, for sure.
John, I just had two questions. What is the rationale for holding off on the modified sports? And if there are no modified sports, can the 7th and 8th graders play JV or varsity?
So Section 1 is divided into three conferences, Conference 1, 2, and 3. We are Conference 2. 75% of the schools in Conference 2, our conference, wanted to do modified sports. So that recommendation is going to go to the executive committee. However, I can tell you that Conference 1 and Conference 3 are not in favor of doing modified sports. So that's the reason. Then the APP process is going to be available for our 7th and 8th grade students to play JV or varsity sports. Our current policy that it's a coach's recommendation right now for those players enabled to be, to be enabled to try out for the upper level. However, we do understand that if there's no sports going on, we wanna give our athletes a good look and we wanna continue the development. So I've already talked with coaches on how we're gonna make sure that we're getting as many athletes on the field as possible.
John, looking at, oh, sorry. Looking at winter sports, I know it's early, but what's your, what's your prediction for sports like basketball and other indoor winter sports? Do you have any sense of whether they'll happen this year?
My worry is that volleyball was considered as a high-risk sport this fall, and primarily because it was indoors. So unless we really see, you know, stabilization with the numbers being low and we're getting back to, you know, the very normal process here in the schools, I don't know how the indoor, you know, format is going to be. I can say that we were able to have a screening process provided to us in district, meaning we can now stream our games in the gym if we are able to get back. So that if there aren't spectators authorized, we can at least play the games. It's really nice. It goes to a YouTube link so that our, you know, spectators and folks can check into the games as much as possible. However, being indoors seems to be the big issue with things right now.
Okay, thank you.
I think maybe this is stating the obvious, but in the late fall/winter, the symptom check that we're asking everyone to do, for sure, there's gonna be more symptoms evident with people just from the common cold, maybe the flu. So there's, you know, that sense of people having to stay home if they're showing those symptoms could alter the way we just do a lot of things this winter quite a bit. And so I think that plays into the thinking about winter sports, so we're in wait-and-see mode.
Are there any other questions? Well, thank you, everybody. I appreciate you letting me present and go Bulldogs. Let's get back to it.
Thank you. Thanks, John. Can I have a motion to go into executive sessions to review the employment history of a particular individual and seek legal advice to review collective bargaining with the Beacon Association of Office Personnel?
So moved back in.
Kristin and Melissa, are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ask is eight zero, I think. Board should be back probably 30 to 45 minutes. And then, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry about that. It's a little bit longer than we expected. We have all. Okay, we do. So I want, first want to review the agenda. We have changes on item 11.04 instructional. The changes are highlighted in yellow. Do we have any school or student presentations? Seeing none. Any parent groups? Seeing none. Matt, do you want to give your superintendent's report?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'll be pretty quick tonight since I know we have a lot more to do in the meeting. Just wanna highlight the last few days in the district and update everyone on a couple of things. So last Thursday and Friday, we had some of our students in the building around about in Beacon High School. We had elementary students meeting teachers or doing meet and greets with teachers outside of the school underneath various tents and things. And then today was our first kind of official day, and we had students starting virtually and students in person. So we had students kind of officially in our classrooms and our buildings for the first time in six months. And so I just wanna, don't countless everyone individually, but there were a lot of people who put a lot of time in to make all that happen. And so it was very gratifying today to see things kicked off, to see students in the buildings, or at least the blue group today. And it was a great day. So just a couple highlights for me. It was cool to see kids outside underneath the tents that we had in place. I know that's gonna increase as time goes on, so that was really cool to see. It's really cool to also see how great a job our students did wearing their masks. And I think our students, just after one scene in action today, they could do public service announcements for the rest of the state and country about wearing masks, because they were amazing today. So that was really great to see as well. And also, there's parts of this that are still a work in progress. And so I was speaking with high school administration after school today, and they've been working with their teachers on trying to provide a little more structure to Wednesdays. So Mrs. Soto is gonna send out something about that tomorrow. It won't be in place until the following week. But time for sort of a more structured time for teachers and students in each class to do sort of a check, ask questions in a more scheduled sort of way. So Mrs. Soto is gonna be releasing information about that. And we also have some teachers at the high school that are experimenting with live streaming their classes. And so they have been working on compiling all those teachers and both working on making sure the students know about that and also that parents know too. And so that should be coming out in the next couple of days too. But that being said, there were a lot of things in place, and it was cool to see things kick off both virtually and in person. And just also, just a huge shout out to our teachers, who I think have really embraced the new schedules and the new ways of doing things, are really trying to share and learn as much as possible. And I think it was a strong start, and I look forward for it to get stronger as time goes on. One sort of announcement, and we'll make sure we put this in a communication to the whole community. But one thing we've been working on with Duchess County, the Duchess County Department of Health, is that we now have an arrangement with Pulse MD in Poughkeepsie that if we need to, either for staff or students, we can send them to Pulse MD to do quick test, the quick COVID tests. They do both the quick rapid, rapid response tests and also the one that takes a few days to get the results on. And so we're gonna work with the Department of Health on who to send for that. It's gonna be random testing, but it says it's gonna be testing where there's a concern or a question. And we also, we would ask that people use their insurance, but if they don't have it, that the district would cover the cost of that for folks who don't. So that's just something that's kind of a new thing that we've been working on. Part of trying to pull off opening as close to on schedule as possible is some of these things are sort of getting into place as we're opening. But we were working on that last week, and so we have that in place. And they also have a priority, like a priority agreement with us, that if we need to send someone over there or refer a family or a staff member, that they would have priority in the scheduling. So that's cool, too. So thanks to Duchess County for helping us get that set up. And thanks to our nursing staff and for being partners with us and making sure that happens, too. So overall, just a huge thanks to our staff for being so flexible and helping us pull all this off today. And also, just a huge thanks to our families for dealing with the new look this year and all the changes that are coming. And just one last thing, I think probably one of my biggest worries going in today, because I sort of have followers of my Zooms this summer know that I've sort of been obsessively reading about other schools opening and trying to learn from struggles that other places have had. And I've read about districts that have taken, where it takes forever for the kids to get in the building just with the screenings that need to happen. And today, we did an awesome job. We really planned it out, and kids were getting in the buildings pretty smoothly. And we're looking to improve where we can in everything we do. But I think it was a pretty positive start, and I can't wait to get back at it tomorrow to work on making it better. So thank you all, and thanks to our staff for making it happen.
Thanks, Matt. Let's do committee reports and board comments. Kristin?
I don't know when we're going to have our next facilities meeting. We've had to move it around a bit and have not connected for when that's going to happen. Obviously, the priority was getting things ready for the opening. So I am gonna have to defer to the admins for that. And just a big thank you to everyone who put in all the work to get this up and running. It's definitely, you know, I think we're, everybody is prepared for a very different and, you know, you're, we're all going to have to give each other a lot of space and flexibility. But I think Beacon really swung for the fences, and so we're doing, we're opening and we're having kids show up in person. And we're, and some kids are remote and hopefully having a good experience with that as well. It came with a lot of effort and risk, and I think with the, with the goal of physically connecting kids with, with school.
Anthony, saying?
No, no report.
Thanks. Craig? Craig, can you hear me? Let's go back to Craig. Anthony White?
I have nothing on the curriculum piece yet. We haven't met since last year. In regards to the first day, I think that it went well. I have one at the high school, middle school and elementary school. There was a little confusion at the high school, but I thought that for the most part, it's to be expected. It's, I think that they'll, the kinks will get worked out. The middle school, I was happy to see that all the Zooms were shared for the kid, girl, the guys and girls that are in the gold group. So they were able to log on like it was the first day of school, just like the blue group. And the same thing with the elementary school. Besides that, I have no other comment.
Anthony, just to let you know, Wednesday's, or the third Wednesday of the month is normally going to be the the curriculum committee meeting, but I'm looking for this month to try to have it next Wednesday.
Third Wednesday at what time?
We're looking at, normally we would have it at 2:30. I'll check with you though. We'll talk, we'll talk off the record to see, you know, what time works for you though.
Okay.
Meredith, I'm unmuted now.
Go ahead, Craig.
Okay, I do have some things. The good news is that our district did make a proposed resolution to the New York State School Boards Association. And they went through the review process and accepted it as part of their legislative advocacy agenda. So I'll read the whole thing. It's just a couple paragraphs. Resolved that the New York State School Boards Association supports legislation that would enable the Commissioner of Education to declare alternate election arrangements in cases where a disaster substantially interrupts a scheduled school board budget vote. And the rationale is the proposing district, the Beacon City School District and other neighboring districts have actually experienced an unexpected weather windstorm that effectively barred numerous voters from physically attending the polling places because roads were blocked by fallen trees and downed power lines. Such a disaster or others can occur at any time and place and can, in extreme cases, prevent an election from being held or in lesser cases undermine public confidence in the democratic process. Existing laws do not provide a remedy, nor could any set of laws cover every situation that might arise. Only an executive could act within the few hours that would remain in which to craft a fair and practical solution in conference with district officials. So we began discussion about this a couple of years ago when we had the big storm dirt about five o'clock on Election Day, which most of us will remember was like nobody could get anywhere. And we did carry out the election, but it was a close call. So the next step is that this goes, I think Anthony White, who's our former lead person on these matters when he was president, has been to the sessions where they talked about these things and so on. And I, I'm not sure if we have further steps that be done. But anyway, this is a very nice one and that they liked what we were suggesting. So beyond that, public relations, advocacy and legislative members of our committee have not been able to meet, but we've been conducting some discussions by email and so on to try to come up with a good draft. And I thank Flora for for her contributions there. I could suggest that we put these revised drafts up on the agenda tonight under, I guess it would be unfinished business for discussion if that would be the pleasure of the board.
It's on the agenda. You can decide if you have the time and energy to to do it, but we do have it on the agenda.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. James?
Hi. Today's the first day of school. You know, I have two seventh graders, two young, two twins going into seventh grade. I think like a lot of families, it's been the major debate the past month, two months is to will we do hybrid? Will we do remote? My kids were old enough that they were really the final, final decision makers and they decided to go hybrid. So we had our first day of hybrid today. And I couldn't be more, more happy. I think I was was more worried than they were going into it, but there was definitely some nervousness. Maybe they're just much cooler than I am. But they told me they had a great time and they're excited to go back tomorrow, which I I have to fully, I can admit now that I think I had a lot of apprehension. I was weighing bets with my wife as to whether or not they would come home and refuse to go back. And we couldn't be more happy. They they feel like they made the right decision. They just couldn't stop talking about it. I want to give all of that credit to the teachers, to to Matt, to the administrators at Rambout. I dropped him off this morning and it felt like it was running like a clock. I hope they can keep it up. I'm a little worried of watching the drop out. There's a lot of labor out there, but in terms of ushering in a first day in a first week, you guys really hit it out of the park. It's really so exciting. It feels a little, like a little taste of normalcy back. And honestly, the kids needed it. I can't speak to remote, obviously, but they have friends and they were talking to their friends online after school. And it feels like we're we're rolling. So I just wanted to give just a huge thank you, appreciation, congratulations to the whole team. I mean, I know we're just taking our first step on a marathon, but but it's a success. So thank you. That's awesome. Policy Committee, you know, I wanted to to talk to you. We have two options for dates in my mind. And I wanted to ask the the committee, really, it's, it would be looking at the Monday, the 28th, which would put us on schedule. I told or I'd said in a previous meeting that I wanted to give the administration team time to let the dust settle from the, in the first weeks of these reopening before we jumped into another policy committee. So I'm looking at the calendar and I see either the 28th or the following Monday, which would be the first Monday of October. I, I love to get things done sooner than later because we have a lot to take on. But if I see we have a board meeting the next night on a Tuesday, and sometimes it's a holiday. So I wasn't sure if there's a administrative holiday on the 28th or if the, so Matt and team.
The team support.
Bianca Por, okay. That's, I thought it was something. So how is the October 5th, the committee?
That works for me, James.
Great. Meredith, Anthony?
Yep, that works for me.
Great. Anthony, is that a yes? Maybe we lost him. And Matt and Bill, Mary and Marie, that's, that's good. Okay. Well, let's put that in as the date. We'll hear back from from Anthony if that's a, that's an issue.
Wait, did you say, James, did you say the 5th of October?
Looking at it again. I'm looking at October 5th, Monday.
That's already on my calendar unless it's because you just put it on it. So.
That was, that was something we, when we made our, thank you for reminding me, we're right on schedule. That's, we had made our master schedule before and we deviated it from the last meeting and this would put us back on track.
Okay, thank you.
October 5th is fine.
Okay, great. All right. And then I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Flora?
Yeah, so, yeah, we are, we are a hybrid household, but we had our first online class today and I have two elementary school students. And I just want to commend, you know, the staff and the teachers for making the first day as pain free as it probably could have been. And despite, you know, confusing start and managing two kids at once, I felt accomplished just getting through the day and I I hope other parents did as well. And thank you to everyone who made that happen, even though it was really hard. I also wanted to say that I'm really grateful for the enthusiasm of the teachers that I've talked to for using the outdoor space. And not just the classrooms, but if the classrooms are being used for utilizing other parts of school campuses to teach. I was really excited to hear that and I hope that that is a trend that I, that is going to be happening at all the schools. And I, and I wanted to mention, give a little hooray to the South Avenue parents and PTA for turning some logs into outdoor seating. That was really cool to see how that came together and I would love to see that repeated at the other schools. I think it's a great sort of use of resources that's free. And and it was something I know the kids will get a lot of use out of. In terms of committee comments, the Wellness Committee, we have a tentative meeting scheduled for Wednesday, September 30th. I believe at 3:30. It's going to be by Zoom, so there'll be, you know, a link TDB. There's going to be a lot of emotional and physical well-being issues that we're going to want to share and discuss this year, you know, as parents and as administrators. So I think it's going to be a good and interesting first meeting. And that's it for me.
Flora, can you repeat the date of that meeting, please?
Yeah, sure. It's Wednesday, September 30th at 3:30 and that will be a Zoom meeting. And if it's going to change, we'll, we'll post it on social media, but that's the tentative date for now.
Thank you. Thanks, Flora. Alyssa?
First, hi. First, I want to apologize for not using my camera. My connection is better without it. So sorry about that. I would like to commend everyone who put in the tremendous work to get us to today. My kids came home smiling and that was good enough for me for day one. I have a few comments for tonight and I've written them down so that I can be more concise. So bear with me. On tonight's agenda is we are appointing the new Director of Transportation. What is the best way for parents to communicate with the bus garage right now during this transition? Because the email address listed on our website in the transportation section is apparently out of service. And some parents had trouble or issues with busing today.
Anne Marie? You want?
Alyssa, I will try to answer. I didn't hear the whole thing that you asked. I did hear the end part about the email address not being active, which I can look into. But we are, we are hiring a new transportation supervisor this evening. As you know, you had, the board had approved us having Ron's remain as the interim. So he's been coming in on the, on Saturdays with our transportation staff to try to get us up and running until this, until our new supervisor can start. But I will look at the webpage and I will look at the email address to see what the issue is and I'll get it resolved tomorrow.
Who should people reach out to before our new director is in place?
Um.
Linda?
To Linda Lane.
Okay.
So we can make sure we get that email out to people.
Yes.
Thank you. My second item is I would, I'd like to just make a suggestion for a protocol on emails going out to the community. I'd like to suggest that we don't have emails going out to the community that just say, check our website for important information without also including a clickable link for parents to find that information easily. There were two emails that came from the high school last week that said, check our website for important new information about high school reopening and orientations. But there were no links provided and it was hard to find the information. And then it was hard to find what the update was. So I'd just like to make that suggestion that any reference to our website should include a clickable link. And my last item is I'd like to tell a quick story about a little boy named Trip Halsted from Atlanta, Georgia. Trip was a healthy, normal two-year-old in 2012 when he was struck by a dead tree limb that fell from a tree on the playground at his daycare center. Trip suffered severe brain damage and as a result became a quadriplegic. He lost the ability to speak, eat and control involuntary functions like breathing and digestion. He lived that way for five and a half years until he died at age seven from complications due to his injuries. If you Google his name, you'll find many articles written about his family's struggle. So I'm telling this story because right now there are two large detached tree limbs hanging from a tree at Sargent Elementary School in the immediate vicinity of the playground and an outdoor seating area. The facilities department was alerted about these over a year ago, but the branch was not removed. And during the windstorm in early August, a large portion of the same tree fell directly onto the playground and the swing set. That debris was cleared, however, large detached limbs were not removed from the tree and are still hanging in the same area of the playground. Last week, the principal at Sargent Elementary was alerted as well. And I, my understanding is that he is working on taking action. But both tree limbs are still hanging there over the area where kids were playing today on the first day of school. The tree in question appears to be diseased or dying. And based on the photographs I've seen, it even looks like it's leaning in the direction of the playground. Can the district please commit to having a professional assess that tree and others that may pose a risk? Another tree came down on Sargent Campus in the same windstorm in August and has not been removed from the property. And during the same storm, a tree came down from Sargent property, which knocked out power to that whole neighborhood for 96 hours. Thank you.
Yeah, we will check it out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. I have a few things. First, you guys will notice on the agenda, we have a new person starting in the Technology Department. My Keely has been working one short for the past month or so. And it's been one of the reasons I think we haven't been able to get our in-person board meeting together. I'm excited to see that. I really hope, especially after tonight, it seems like everyone's connection is not good. I'm hoping we can move forward with in-person board meetings as long as it's safe. We can do it safely. Also, I was contacted by Guano, who is running the Spirit of Beacon Day Parade, wanting to know if any of us were interested in doing this drive, drive parade. We, she explained to me, we could drive in our own cars if we want. And she's really looking, I think, to honor people who have helped the community in the last, since March. I think it would be great if, Matt, you were willing to drive. And if any other administrators were, because we are really grateful for the work you've done. And it has been a bright spot for many people. I know it hasn't been perfect. It's been, it's been hard and complicated. But I do feel like it would be great to, to be able to cheer you guys on. Board members are invited to drive as well. I I feel very uncomfortable with that sort of attention. I'll be honest, but but we can talk about it. But I do think it would be great to have the district represented in the parade because I think, I think that the district has been important for people this, this year, you know, started in March, I think, with the right priorities of making sure people have food and had, and had the technology to connect. And I hope that we'll spend the fall improving what happens with those connections and really making sure that that our kids are staying above water. I can say that my two sons started high school today. My, my younger son started as a freshman. My, my older son started as a junior. And they seemed really happy and they, they, you know, I think that my younger son went for his in-person orientation on Friday and he seemed happy. And he seemed happiest he'd seen since literally April. So I'm so grateful to the teachers. They are essential workers and all the staff and administrators. But I really recognize the work you've done. We have such a hard year ahead of us, I think. But I hope that we can continue to prioritize the the health and wellness and education of our kids. So please reach out to me tomorrow about the Spirit of Beacon Day Parade and let me know who's willing to to drive in it. And I also I sent everyone. Oh, of course.
I said a couple of quick questions about that.
Yes, James.
Two questions. One is, I know normally in the Spirit of Beacon Day, the schools like have make some kinds of float or anything. Do you know if schools are doing that or participating this year in that that parade or whatever, the caravan? Does anybody know?
I've been so busy with the school reopening. I have not wrapped my arms or head around Spirit of Beacon Parade. So I don't know.
Seeing messages in the chat saying PTOs haven't asked to participate. And then my second question is, I know we mentioned it as a joke maybe in in jest before. But what are the chances we could secure a school bus? For just, I don't know if the, because I don't know if the BTA is doing anything or schools are doing anything. But I do think that like, there's a part of me that feels actually a little excited about the idea of really celebrating what the entire school community has done. I mean, it's such a huge part of our city and it's been, I felt it honestly throughout the past months. I love the idea of having something like a school bus, being part of that, just to represent the schools. Matt, maybe you should be driving it, leaning out, waving your hand to everyone, something.
Need a special license to do that?
Yeah. Is Matt licensed?
No.
Matt, I'm sure you have more than enough to deal with at this point, but I think it'd be a great idea to think about. That's all.
We could all decorate Matt's car and as a school bus. How about that? Anyway, we can we can think more offline about it, but I I agree that I think the district has been central to, you know, to keeping things together. And so I think, yeah, I would love to see the district represented in multiple ways. And I'm glad the PTAs have been asked to 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 participate as well. The last thing I was going to mention is I sent the everyone this information from Duchess Mediation. Please take a look at it. I don't want to move forward with this until we finished our appointment process, but I think it's important to to keep that going. And with that, we are moving on to unfinished business. We have three items on unfinished business. I wanted to just say to everyone, we're gonna have a second executive session tonight to 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 talk about the board candidates. So if we feel like we, you know, depending how long the first conversation goes with our board candidates, we can decide whether or not we want to table either one of these and and move it to the next meeting. So with that, I'm sorry, it's nine o'clock. It's been a while, but thank you to everyone who did apply for the to fill the board vacancy. It's a really hard time to take on any sort of additional commitment right now. So I have to say, I really was so pleased that anyone applied and and so grateful. I'm going to just go in alphabetical order and give you an opportunity to speak for a couple of minutes about why you're interested in taking this position. You can also use it as an opportunity to ask questions if you have them and then board members will be offered an opportunity to ask you questions. So Barb Fisher, you are first in alphabetical order. Are you there?
I am. Is it all set?
I did see. Okay. Yes, yeah.
It's working.
Welcome.
This is my first real grown-up Zoom meeting. I kind of, I've been lucky enough to get to miss most of these in the last six months. So I stumbled upon the application for this position being open on the Sargent PTO's website or via Facebook. So that's where I found out that this was even a possibility. And it really it really got my attention in that I've watched this community really pull together since March in ways that I would bet wouldn't have been something that people would have considered possible, maybe. I think that challenging times create great innovation and possibilities for filling gaps and holes. And in watching how the school board and Dr. Landau and the schools and the food side of things and how the kids got taken care of, I was fairly involved with the Beacon Mutual Aid Group and watching what they were doing. I know there's a lot of coming together with other smaller groups in town to create bigger groups, to have more influence in terms of finding other ways to participate. And I just think that this is a great time. And I found myself drawn to the school board as a way to to maybe interject myself, so to speak. I really have loved watching how the communities come together in so many different ways. And I think that it opens doors for bringing education and business in the community together in more ways that we haven't really explored yet. I was an educator for a long time. I am now business owner in town and I've got kids. So the three intersecting components of this for me right now are, I'm really interested in looking or seeing if there are ways for the community and the school board to provide some alternative. Well, I don't know if alternative is the right way to say it, but I think that we need to have more programs and things that we can get all of these resources and continue moving forward with them, not have it just sort of come to an end when this crisis is over and back to business is normal. I kind of like to see this become the new normal. And I'm sorry, I'm stumbling over words, but it doesn't seem like it's it's it just seems like a really awesome opportunity and a really great time for these kinds of collaborations to become normal. And I'd really like to get to participate in the ground level of that happening. And I think that Beacon is an amazing spot for having a really diverse community in terms of the just massive talent that we have in this community that we've all seen come together in the different ways that it's happened from. I mean, even the support of adopting seniors and how much of a push that was from just parents from a completely different sort of point of view. And I just think that now's a great, it's just a good time. I like to see how all of it has sort of happened and I'd really like to participate in in pushing that forward. I guess is really the the crux of it. In terms of in my past experience with education, I'm a real fan of restorative justice practices. And I'd like to see how things involving internet problems and Instagram problems and other sorts of, I've heard lots of problems. Maybe there's a way that we can take this community involvement and these notions of restorative justice and find good ways to sort of address things as they go forward in that regard. That's sort of the things that got my attention with with why I was interested in applying for now. I I am, I like education and I really like being out of education. And I really like the idea of participating from more of a business standpoint. And so here I am, I guess, is the summary of it all.
Thanks, Barb. Are there any questions for Barbara Fisher? Do you like to go by Barbara or I know you as Barb, obviously?
Barb is fine. Either way, it's Barb is great.
Meredith, were you asking if we had questions for Barbara or if Barbara had questions for us?
Um, actually, yeah. Barb, do you have any questions for the board before?
I really don't. I spent some time watching the last five or six board meetings and I've paid attention for a while. And at this point, I sort of feel like there's been so much up in the air that I don't even know where to start asking questions. I I just feel like right now I am happy to jump in and help out in any way that you guys sort of need it.
I mean, besides the, you know, your background in education and obviously your current experience as a business owner, what do you think in terms of, because this is a this is a group that you join, you know, this is something that this is a an extended team project, which for many people is just like a like a never-ending nightmare sometimes. But what do you think that you could bring to? Like, how do you feel like you what you contribute to to a group project or exercise?
Well, I at this point, I am hoping that I can bring some different types of perspective. In terms of, I've been in the land of education and I've listened to students for a long time talk about what they value and things that they wish for. I've listened to other teachers and other people in terms of as colleagues talk about that. I've listened to administrators talk about it from the point of view of, I was their employee and I was involved in in a cog of a system. And now I look at it like I've hired some of these kids and I've been their boss. And I feel like I don't have a good answer for that question because I don't have a specific that I can really draw on. What I'm hoping is that I can understand the the jargon that goes along with the educational component of some of the metrics that are happening. I really like the push of moving towards using rubrics for decision-making processes. And I'd like to participate in building said rubrics. I like the idea of keeping things as fair as possible and making sure that the language involved in something like a measurement tool, whether it's for decision-making processes or measuring whether or not something has been a positive or negative result. I like the modeling component of it. I like reading data and seeing if there are things that pop out at me in different ways. I like to make things up on the fly and see and just throw stuff out to see if it sparks any sort of anybody else's ideas. I'm not really interested in driving the bus, so to speak, but I'd wave from the window. I mean, I'm a real fan of like whatever sort of needs to get done, I'd be happy to do. And so far as having a real super innovative idea right this second, I don't.
Sure.
No, no, it's fine. I just, the whole application, I'd never even really considered participating in this right now. Just the timing of it all has lent itself to, I have the best staff I could possibly ask for in a business sense. And I actually have time to sit back and ask myself, what else can I participate in? I'm and and this was the first, this really got me excited when I saw the application. So I'm hoping that I can just find good ways to contribute in any way that you guys have such a great steam going right now. I don't want to say I would want to detract from it. I just think that the way that things are going right now in Beacon and the schools is something that I'm really proud of as far as a community member. And I'd like to at least hold to the same standard that's already being upheld.
Any other questions for Barb?
Yeah, Barb, what do you?
Kristen, I just.
Barbara, I just had two questions. One was, describe what you feel your role would be as a board member. Like, what do you envision that being like? Like, what do you feel like you, what decisions do you feel you'd be part of? And the other part is, why go through the application process and not run for the election that was just ended back in June?
Because in the last election, I felt that the people who were running were doing or were well representing me at the time. And I felt like they were really excited and interested and I was well taken care of. Insofar as right now in participating, I was concerned that you weren't going to have any interest, quite frankly. I saw that and we're in the middle of COVID and there's a lot of crazy and this is a really unprecedented times in terms of education in general. And so I care a lot about making sure that standards stay at least maintained. So I figured I'd throw my hat in the ring now while I figured it mattered. I insofar as my role as a board member, I really hope that I will find a way to watch and fit in and be as useful as I can. I really like math and metrics and measurement tools. I really like seeing how data gets applied to things. I read the the mission statement, well, no, wrong words, the help me.
Strategic plan.
Thank you. I read the strategic plan and understood about a quarter of it on first glance. And I was really excited to see the direction that things were going. And so I like to get myself more immersed in the business side of schools. And that's something that I don't really know in terms of fundraising, finding ways to participate in pushing programming forward. I was listening to the coach talk about intramural stuff and I think that there's a lot of possibility for intersection between the intramurals and the community resources in ways that maybe we haven't discussed yet. I used to play soccer way back in the day. I miss playing ball. I would love to go out and practice with some kids. And since I'm not working constantly, it'd be kind of fun. I might not be the only person that feels that way. I don't even know if it's possible. But that's the idea that I had thinking and listening to what he'd said. So I miss participating with grownups too in other regards. It's been a while since I've gotten to feel like something I'm doing is really mattering on a bigger scale. And so that's sort of how I see it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Anthony.
Nice to meet you, Barb. The so the, there's a lot of, you have a lot of energy in terms of what you want to offer. The the board itself is almost like a thousand-foot view over the board, the district activities. So I guess my question is, can, what do you, what do you envision your thousand-foot view would be to to what you can, what you contribute to the district? And I also want to build upon that, you know, that the board is a team. And it's a, you know, I think our success a lot of times is that we, you know, we're not all the same. And and so but but we are at a thousand-foot view. So can you can you kind of elaborate that a little bit more?
Sure. So I would in terms of a thousand-foot view, I would look at the so to me, it seems like in terms of the mission of the board, that the first couple of things that I saw when I was looking at the goals and the mission statement had to do with excellence and diversity. And I think that in terms of excellence, that we've taken a lot of steps in education to push students to I'm sorry, it's it's just a hard for me to it's hard for me to go from a thousand-foot view to a specific and have a good, I don't have a good handle of how to tell you specifically what my thousand-foot view is, I guess, is what I'm stumbling over. I look at the whole board and the situation as the intersection of all of the facilities, all of the teachers, all of the administrators, all of the students, all of the parents, all of the financial components, all of the goals of the rigors of educate of the curriculum side of things and making sure that all of the things align in a way that allow the students, which seem to be the most important component of this, to be as successful as they possibly can and to help guide things as I figure any policies that really get put into place now really affect kids four or five years from now. And you really don't get to see a lot of the fruits of what you're establishing in terms of these types of foundations and frameworks until it's given a long time and made until small incremental changes are given that butterfly effect. And so you can see where they're at in in the future.
I understand. Yeah, I mean, let me just, if I can help you out a minute. So I guess maybe not thousand-foot view is the right analogy, maybe set the tone for the for the district to do it, to do the work. Would that help you?
No, I'm not sure what you're getting at then in terms of a tone. There's a specific direction that you're hoping. I I'm not, I'm not catching it. It's, I'm sorry. Like, is there a point?
Yeah, so.
Which way do you want me to go?
And I'm sorry, we're not connecting. So for example, like we made the board goals. We don't implement the goals. We don't put enough information. We don't micromanage enough in the goals to say, this is how it's supposed to be done, right? But we did establish the goals. All right, this is the strategic plan itself was a compilation between the board, but it was also the district administration and a bunch of it. Was a compilation between the board, but it was also the district administration and a bunch of it and a lot of input from parents and stuff like that. You know, we ourselves are 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 while we're part of those gears, we're not the main gear in that, so. You know, we 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 don't. We don't tell the folks in the district how to do the job, but we do provide it. An overarching goal that we want them to achieve to do the job and, you know, for the benefit of our children.
Right, so. In terms of how I would fit into that, I know that there's discussion, let me maybe pick a particular in terms of. I know that there are issues that are happening that I've seen with regards to Instagram bullying and things that are happen cyber wise. In the high schools right now, and I know that it's been brought to the board and the board is being asked to at some point. Discuss, address, come up with a policy, a procedure in dealing with guide guiding the future or guiding the. The direction of the district. I see myself as wanting to participate in helping establish that sort of directional component. If this is the lawmaking component and they're the bureaucracy implementing all of the things, I would like to make sure that. Or I would like to participate in things of that nature, I think it's very important to address. For me, I'd really like, I I don't even know how to tell you what the solution to that is, I would want to participate in the group and see kind of. The way that things are steering, but I would like to have my voice in that particular type of a pot, so to speak, so. I'm not interested necessarily in telling anybody how to do anything per se as a micromanagement level. But if there is a way that we can connect. A building facilitator to a group of students that want to do a kind of poetry slam to somebody that's got money to do this. To the teachers and the people that are interested in dealing with it, to me. Having the ability to reach out in that sort of capacity is something that I don't know if the board does, but I think the board should. And so I think that there are ways that we can. Take this name, this notion of community resources and find a way to group it and that might not be micromanaging per se, but I think. Helping is maybe a better way of the way I'm sort of looking at it like organizational help, so to speak. I hope that answers it.
Um, so anybody else have any questions?
Barb, I just thought I'd ask just for the benefit of everyone. Can you tell us how long you were in working in education and where and in what capacity?
Sure, I've been teaching high school math and physics along with collegiate level math and physics. For 15 years before I started the butcher shop. I was a graduate assistant in Michigan, but had an. An adjunct position teaching part time at the community college is sort of where it started. I went through graduate school and was a teaching instructor and then an instructor at Penn State for a couple of semesters. I came to New York and I taught high school level math and physics in the Bronx for five years. And then the most recent job I had, I was teaching math at SUNY Orange across the river in Newburgh on their campus. So it's been sort of a gamut, I'm licensed in five through 12 in New York State. But I have more experience teaching college level than I do high school. And then the butcher shop, I've been a business owner in town for it's five and a half years, it'll be six years in December that we've been open.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Barb, can you just talk about how you would reach out to the constituents of the community to make sure that you're get you're representing all of them?
Well, I figured this was a really good time to find out if I was a good representative in terms of a candidate, since it's a six month appointment and we're running in May. I'm hoping that in terms of by then I will have some idea of how to get ahold of folks. I know that. I'm assuming that people reach out to us as well and I don't know that short of traditional methods, I have anything. Better in terms of an idea, short of just being really accessible and making it very easy to get ahold of me in terms of such.
Can I follow up on that question and ask? I mean, as a business owner, I feel like you've had a lot of contact with the community and, you know, you you see a lot of people. Pretty regularly in that capacity, like through your business, can you tell me how? That has sort of changed your relationship to the community?
I know a whole lot more people now than I did before I started the shop, that's for certain. I I didn't even really consider that they come through the doors a bunch, I'm in and out so often these days that I don't look up when I'm even in the back. I reached out through the, I mean, in terms of. The business side of things, most often when people are looking for something from me or need help with something, they find me. And it's easy, it's as easy as a phone call or an email to the shop or asking Lauren, hey, where's Barb? That's pretty typical, but most of the time people have just come in and talked to me about. Things that they're dealing with, I mean, I've. I've done all kinds of different types of fundraising for folks when they've come through and asked and it's been really easy for them to get ahold of me, I think my favorite one was making cheeseburgers for the skate park guys. But they found me without too much trouble and told me what they needed and we found a way to work it out, I've given my grill to folks like. As much as I could and the role that I have, I've been able to participate as well as possible. And, you know, it it's hard to say because. My goal in reaching out to the community from the butcher shop, it would be very different than. Reaching out to the community as a board member and since I haven't been in this position yet and I haven't tried to run, I really don't know for certain. The right approach, short of. I think just the same way as this, just talking to people, I mean, that's how we built, I built the store was just through grassroots communication with folks, so I suspect it would be, I hope something similar.
Barb, I know we have a lot of candidates to get to, but I just wanted to sort of. Connect to Anthony's, you know, description before, something that we've talked about is. You know, culture of care and we want to build community and those are parts of our goals and I can say like a way that I've noticed like a sergeant. When you give free food contributed to the. Events that they have that allows families to attend without paying admission. And have a nice out night out with their kids and connect with the school and that's sort of like. The execution on the ground floor, we look for ways to. Do that in sort of a more bureaucratic sense, does that make sense?
Yep. I'm not sure, go ahead, no, no.
Well, and this actually might not be entirely directed to you to Barb because maybe I'm incorrect. But my understanding is this appointment would last until June of 2022, is that correct, Meredith?
Uh, no, that's not correct, actually, it would be until June of 2021.
Okay, so it's not completing Mike Rokowski's term?
No, actually, I thought the law was at at the election day itself that it would end. I know it's weird, but you know.
That's what I had to do and Craig and I were appointed, we 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 were appointed until the next election and then we had to run.
Okay, I thought it was completing his term.
No, but so the way it will work is that we'll have four seats open at the next election and then whoever gets the. Least number of votes will get Mike's term, will get a shorter term and then they'll have to run again. At the completion of that term.
Sorry, that's one minute, okay, thank you.
So did anybody, we do have three other candidates to interview, does anyone else have any questions for Barb? Thanks for going first, Barb.
No problem.
The next personalist is Travis Fisher, Barb's husband.
Hello, is my audio working okay?
Yes, hi Travis.
Hi, so do you want me to just go ahead with some introduction?
Yeah, talk a little bit about yourself, you know, and why you think you would be good to fill the vacancy.
Okay. I've been interested in the school board since about 2015, I thought. There were some things happening back at that time period that were very concerning and I met a lot of you on the board at that time. I didn't feel like I had the time in my personal life at that point to commit to. The effort that I know it takes to be on the school board. But, well, thanks, I don't know if that's the right word to the coronavirus, I have a lot more work from home opportunity. Especially now, but I think going forward for the long term also and my kids are getting bigger. And that means I feel like I could actually make a good commitment here. I think my background is. Very technical person, I have a PhD in mathematics, I studied math and computer science as an undergraduate. I was always the geeky guy, I was valedictorian of my high school. I'm always loved learning and I would like to see the. Kids in our district have that same opportunity to find things that they love and develop in the best way that they can. I have a very long term commitment to quality of education here. I really am willing to do this because I want to see the best things for our district and for the students. I feel like that the since 2015. The school board and the administration have improved greatly and I've been really impressed and happy with the things that you guys have been doing. And I'm thankful to you guys for putting in the effort to do it. And Barb and I talked when this opening came up and we were both concerned, are you going to really get good candidates to continue that? And so we thought, well, why don't we both throw in ourselves and encourage other people we know to. Make sure you have a good application pool for people who can bring different things to the district. So I think what I can bring is a lot of the sort of. Technical side, helping with the work of the board, a lot of the sort of long term. Sort of commitments to. Joining on this this process, I know everything that the board does is very indirect, you you hire superintendent, you set policy. There's very few sort of direct things that you do that make an immediate change, but. The long term things that you do build up the changes gradually and I would be going to be happy to be a part of that.
Do you have any questions for the board, Travis?
No, I don't think so at this time.
Are there any board members that have questions for Travis?
Yeah, I have one, this Craig, I remember that several years ago when you became active and the. The chat boards where a lot of tumult and discussion was going on about what to do about the Beacon School District. You were a frequent contributor and it struck me that you must know quite a bit about. The way things work with the state education department and in some of the more arcane areas of. Educational management that most people simply scratch their heads about and wonder what is all that stuff? Could you tell us a bit about some of your background, how how you come to have those kind of insights and interest?
I don't know, I I'm kind of geeky person who reads the actual laws and the things that they. Whatever implementation guidelines and the presentations that they made to go along with these. Because I was curious to understand what was going on. So my actual back background, as I said, is in mathematics. It's the job I have currently, I build mathematical models for a bank. Barclays Bank, if you care, foreign exchange derivatives options pricing, it doesn't matter, I'm willing to dig into things and. If it feels like something that's important to understand, I'll just dig in and understand it.
Do you have a sense of what you? What you feel like? Because I know that you had been involved from a while back and we're very helpful in digging through. A lot of research and data, especially around district improvement plans and focus district data. Do you have a an opinion or a thought about what you think? You know, assuming that you've read the strategic plan and what we've decided to focus on that you think has been something that's been. You know, a strong initiative or or an important thing that we've decided to focus on?
So I think something that the district actually made an important improvement in was graduation rate. That's one of the things that allowed the district to get off of the focus list from the state's policy when they revamped that list. And I think that's one of the sort of most important areas that the the district has made improvements in. I feel like there is, when you look at the data, there's still some things that are are sort of flashing a bit of a warning sign where. Particularly black students, students of color are not getting the same level of progress as other students. Despite students in particular, and I worry that there's, you know, something that's. Still the district should be doing to improve better and there's also issues with. The students, special education students, students with disabilities. Where according to the data, the district is still a little bit on the weak side and sort of, you know, on the. Where the state would be identifying danger zones and if they remake this focus district list, we're. Quite likely to end back up on it again and that concerns me.
Anthony, did you have a question?
Yes, so just to be fair, I'm going to ask the same question to all the candidates. Cause I've met, I've met Travis before through the advocates, I kind of feel like I want to ask him some more questions, but I just to be fair, I'll ask the same question, so. The so as you know, as part of a team, as board members, you know, we're a thousandth view, like what would be your. Like what at the first time, what would be your contribution, what would be your your? Contribution to the team to 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 set the tone for the district?
Um, oh, yes, this is the setting the tone question that Barb also had trouble with. I'm not sure about setting the tone. So I I think as a as a board member, the kind of contribution that I would be best at is sort of. Participating in the the business of the board, doing the policies, working on the budget. In terms of setting the tone for the district, I think the thing that I consider is most important is. The the culture of care, I think that it's important that if our students feel like. Everybody in the district is on a team that's supporting them and trying to help them succeed, that they'll just. Almost uniformly do very well, I think that's what students, that's what kids need in order to grow and develop well is they need somebody to care about them and believe in them. And the the best thing that we can do is give them opportunities to have. Interactions with adults in the district where they have one on one, small groups. Ability to to build a connection and feel that culture of care.
Hi James.
Hi, hi Travis, thank you. So my question for you is if you, what do you think? Or maybe what perspectives do you think are missing from the board currently? And what do you think you can bring to fill that perspective?
So. That's a complicated question, obviously, there's lots of perspectives that you would hope to have on the school board. You would hope to have sort of representative representative of the community in various ways and. I'm not sure, it's true that, you know, sort of geeky flight guys are that badly underrepresented on the board, although that might, you know, be in the competition to out geek. Most of you, but that's. I I think it. I, I think you're touching on something that is possibly an important consideration for the school board, which is how representative is the board in terms of matching the community that it comes from? And I think that the things that I, I bring in terms of my perspective are maybe a little bit different than some of the current board members. I have a very STEM background. But that's not the only possibility. And that's one of the things that Barb and I were talking about when we talked about this opening is, well, we wanted you to have a lot of different opportunities for choosing between people who can contribute different things to the board.
Are there any other questions for Travis?
Travis, just the same question that I asked Barbara was, why didn't you run for election this past election for the board? It was during COVID times and it was an easier way to get on it. You didn't have to get the signatures and stuff. So why the application process versus the election process?
And again, it's a similar answer. At the election time, I thought that we had candidates who would do a good job serving on the board. And I know it's a lot of work. I'm happy to let somebody else do the work. If somebody else is gonna step up and do a really good job. So I was okay to, to stay back at that point. And I'm perfectly okay if you give the job to somebody else at this point. I don't need it, but if you, if you give the job to me, I will do my best.
And, and the same question as well is, how, how will you reach out to the constituents of the community?
And that's a hard question for me. I'm a little bit of an introvert. I am, I feel like I'm pretty easy to talk to when I get in a conversation with someone, but I'm not much of a person to reach out and, and try to go shake hands with a bunch of people or something. I am easily accessible online, email, Facebook and that kind of thing. And happy to join in any kind of discussions there. I participate in things that the school or my kids are at, the elementary school. And other than that, I don't know.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Travis? Thank you, Travis. Next is John Galloway. John, you want to talk a little bit about what you think you would bring to the board?
Can everybody hear me? Just to be sure. Okay, cool. So my name is John Galloway and I'm 23 years old. I graduated from Beacon High School in 2015. And I think that I would bring a, like, I, I think I'd be a very valuable piece to the team. Because very, very connected with the mic community, to the point where I can't walk down Main Street anymore without kids from.
We lost your, John, we lost your audio. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
I can't. You may want to turn off your camera if you're low on bandwidth, just so we can make sure your audio comes through.
Can you, you hear me better now?
Yeah, let's try that.
Okay. Well, what I was saying was that I have a nonprofit organization called The Label Foundation. And I've been very, very involved with the community over the past four and a half months, I'd say. And I think me personally, that is what's missing from the school board. Like I think personally, when it comes to how we are going to make the school district better, you have to connect with the community. You have to connect with parents. You have to connect with teachers. You have to connect with principals. You have to connect with, like, you can't go making decisions for a whole entire district without consulting the community. You know what I mean? Like, and that's just what I feel that I bring, I would bring to being a part of the team is being that bridge and being very involved with the community. Is what I think I, I bring, I would bring to the school board.
John, do you have any questions for the board?
Yes, um. The one question that I'm very just curious about is, you know, I just want to know, why is it that there's a disconnection between the community and the school board?
John, can I, can I, can I ask you a quick clarifying question? When, when you say the community, could you elaborate on who you're talking about more specifically?
For me, it is realistically me, my family, families that I've known that have been here for years. You know what I mean? Like years, generations of families that have been here that often say that they don't go to PTL meetings. They don't go to city council meetings. They don't go, like, they, they're not involved with their community because they feel like they don't care. You know, and that is starting to become a problem for me. And I feel like I can be that bridge as to where we can now make that connection. As to where there's people like me who want to get involved in what I want to do now, but do not have the confidence because they don't think they can. Because they think that you, that you guys do not care. And it's just like, I know some of you personally. I spoke with you throughout this process. Obviously, that's not the case. You know what I mean? Like, you guys are frontline. You guys are doing work daily, weekly. You're doing everything you can to try to make the community better. So that is why I asked, like, what, what is it? Like, why do you think that there's a disconnection?
Anthony, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I could speak for myself. I think, I don't think it's, I don't think it is for any bad reasons why I cannot speak on your behalf. I think I am myself, I'm limited to what I know and who I know. Because I am one person and, and, and I, you know, my, my job takes me down to, my job, my, my office is in Manhattan. You know, the, this pandemic has actually feed up a lot of my time, but still can't socialize anybody. So I think my own limitations has, has stopped me from doing that. I think that, I think because I am only one person and because I can only, I can only speak to the, to the circle that I am in, and I'm in a lot of different circles. I think it's important that in order to be representative of the people that you feel that we haven't reached out to that, that I applaud you for applying for the board to represent. So I think, you know, I, 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 I admit my, my faults and my limitations on that front. You know, I'm, I am half Colombian, half Chinese, and I, I don't know all Hispanics and all the Asians in Beacon. You know, I don't, so I, but I do try to speak on, on their behalf as well, as, as well as behalf of, of working middle-class families, single-parent families. You know, the demographics that I've struggled with, that I've, I've met people with similar struggles. So I think it's very important that we all come from different struggles in order to, to, to reflect on, on, on what we, you know, what we impose on, on the school district. So I do appreciate your question.
Of course. Thank, thank you.
Did I answer it?
Yes, yes, you did. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Do you have any other questions for the board, John?
Um, my only other question realistically, well, it's kind of like two questions. So my first question is, why is it that the school board isn't really working to get a recreation center in Beacon?
Well, that's a city, that would be a, a city program. It's not under the purview of the Beacon City School District.
But you can act, you can, you can advocate for it very strongly. You're the, you know, like, you're the school district and your students would be going to this after-school program. And it is very, very strongly needed. So I, I would just want to know why that isn't on, why wouldn't it be on your mind? Like, why wouldn't you be giving it any attention, I guess, is my question?
Can I, can I respond to that? Would people be okay with that?
Go ahead.
You know, the thing which I, I don't think I was aware of until I became on the school board is how massive this endeavor is. You know, there are nine of us who are volunteering our time to take on, there, there are so many facets and nooks and crannies of ways to make the system better. And it's kind of all of our job to, to, to have our little areas that we're looking at and thinking about and share them with each other, and then we bring them together and find some kind of consensus. So, I mean, honestly, I'd be, I've been thinking quite a lot about a rec center and advocating in some ways. You know, we have three or four hours every couple of weeks to come together. And in a way, it's just very valuable to have people who are bringing certain perspectives in to, to elevate those to a discussion. Would that be an issue that could go to our public advocacy group? Possibly. But I think it's impossible for us to think of everything, but it's also a great reason, argument for why we need more perspective. This is how I would respond to that, because I think it's a great, I think it's a great thing that it's.
I, I think it's a great thing too, because it also, like, when I was growing up, I had a recreation center. And it was people who I already looked up to as our counselors. And that also creates a mentorship. Like, you understand what I'm saying? Where like, they're watching kids under them grow. And when they, and they help them grow. Like, as for example, there's multiple people, as in Sean Jackson, Joe Sweat. I can name multiple people that graduated from the class of 2006 that were my counselors that mentored me, that put me into the direction that I'm going in right now. And this is a cycle that can be created in Beacon that is not being created. And I just really, really think very strongly that the first step to that cycle would be a recreation center. And I think that, me personally, this is how it feels as an outsider, community member. I did some research. You guys implemented a turf field, which is about $4 to $5 per square inch. Eighty thousand feet is how big a turf, you, a usual turf football field is. I did the math correctly, I think. It's $380,000 for a turf field, but we already have one. We have a football field. We have two, actually. In high school, people that have played on the Beacon Bears football field, they played at Hammond's. So you're using two fields and you wasted, if I'm correct, $380,000 on a turf field. I personally believe that we did not need a turf field and we needed a recreation center. And we, and we need a recreation center. This is not like, oh, we need, we need one very badly.
John, I'm, I'm just gonna.
I could be wrong, 100% wrong, but this is just off of my own research and you, I could be wrong, but that's just what it said online.
So I just want to point out that on, another thing on our unfinished business is to talk about our agenda with the city. I, I'm sure I'm not alone whenever anyone asks me what the city can do for the district. A rec center, free after-school program and universal broadband are the, the top three things on my list. And I think I'm not alone in repeating that often to any city official that will listen to me. Anthony, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, no, I just, I just appreciate John's passion, actually. So, I mean, I think, I think it kind of reminds us that, you know, what, what we're fighting for. And, you know, I, I, and I know that there's the separation between the school and the city. And, and, you know, I, I, a lot of us don't appreciate it until we're actually on the job. And we, we have to get the training and then get, go through the, the mechanisms of all the decision-making we're doing. Figure out, you know, where can we put the money and all that stuff? So, so I do admire John's passion on that. And I do actually understand his, his, where he's coming from. I mean, Beacon used to have a Boys and Girls Club on Main Street and that sat down. And then I, I remember also playing basketball. They opened the gym at St. Joakim's Church for weekend basketball. And that was eventually shut down. And, and, you know, the, the, it's, the, the, we, the, the, the children need, need that. They do need after-school outlets for that. And I do realize that, you know, that school programs, the more organized ones, they, they, they do have scholarships and stuff like that for those that can't afford it. But, and I do know that the, the city now has a quote-unquote rec center on Center Street, West Center Street. So, you know, I, 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 I don't know where everything stands in terms of community. And I think that's where, where John's perspective would be helpful in terms of kind of informing us, like, like, you know, where are the, where are the other needs? And where can we collaborate? I know as a school district ourselves, we, you know, we do have resources, but our funds are limited to, to education. So I, obviously, like, check here, but we can see. I mean, I definitely welcome the conversation and I welcome the passion. Thank you.
Thank you. That, those are the only two questions I have. And if anybody has questions for me, I'm open to that as well.
So just to clarify, because I was on the facilities committee that did a lot of public outreach related to that capital plan. Are you opposed to the turf field?
I'm not opposed to the turf field. No, I'm not. I'm just opposed to the fact of it being sort of put on the back burner for a turf field. I'm not, I know that I'm not the only one that has ever thought about a recreation center because they were all shut down while I was growing up. So I just know, just coming from that and then seeing throughout all those years from age only 15 to 18, what it's done to our community. Some of my friends who are now in prison for more than 10 to 15 years because they had nothing else to do but be in the streets. Because every single program was taken away from them. So that's why it's sort of like passionate for me. Like, I don't want anybody to feel like I'm antagonizing them or anything like that. But this is what I went through in our community. It's really what I'm saying and how it feels that, like, I'm not opposed to turf field at all. Of course, it's a beautiful field. I'm glad we have it. But it's just a simple fact of that there's more important things that, at, 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 there's more important tasks to be handled, in my opinion.
Anthony, did you have a question for John? Sorry?
Which Anthony?
Anthony, thanks.
Oh, me? Okay, sorry. So, so that's the same question. So the board is, the board is, you know, they have a thousand-foot view, so we don't, we don't, we set the goals, we set the tone for the district. We don't necessarily tell the district how to do it. So, you know, what, what would be your contribution to, and we work as a team, you know, there's nine, there's supposed to be nine of us working together. Doesn't mean we can't debate with each other. But, you know, we come up to some consensus. What would be your contribution to this team to set the tone for the district?
Um, my contribution is really focused on communication. Like, you know, like, like you said, we can debate with each other. And I think that we should debate with each other in more of a manner where like, I'm learning. You know what I mean? Like, I say something that I strongly agree with, but you say something that you strongly disagree with, that you're disagreeing with me. But then again, I'm also listening to what you're saying. In a stance where like, I, I'm also learning. Like, you understand what I'm saying? We're like, okay. In a stance where like, I, I'm also learning, like, you understand what I'm saying, where like, okay, I ca- I may feel very strongly about this, but it may not be the right thing. Like, you know what I mean, like, what you're feeling strongly about may be the right thing and I may not be seeing that. And those kind of debates and conversations can open my, uh, mind up to other things, like, if you understand what I'm saying.
Anthony, wait.
Sure, I just had two questions. Why are you going for the application process versus going for the election in the past, that was this past June?
Me, personally, I was a part of the community that really, truly and wholeheartedly do, believed in the disconnection that. And also, one, I was twenty-two years old at the time, I really, in my head, did not think I could be put in this position. To where I'm running for an election and it's actually a successful election and, you know, like, it's more like. Think about this, like, for example, with this appointment process, there's two people in here, I believe, if I heard right, with college degrees. I do not have one for the outside looking in. At that time, me running for election and, you know, and you go to look me up. You see, I graduated five years ago, five, six years ago. And me personally thinking with the community looking at me, what do I have to offer? Like, you know what I mean, that, that's really how I felt, is like, at the time, this community is gonna look at me like I have nothing to offer. Which, right now, if I had to, I would run for election with no problem, because I now have the confidence that I would win.
Right, and the other question that I have is, describe what you feel the role is, what your role as a board member is.
Um, my role for the board member would again be realistically in, being an absorber. As in, I am twenty-three years old, a lot of you are a lot older than me, you've had more experiences. You've, you have, you just have more knowledge.
Thank you, you were not a lot older.
I'm sorry, it's like, I'm just saying, like, you know, a lot of you, some of you may have, like, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years on me. And it's a lot of experiences, I would say, an absorber and I actually also communicating. And again, communicating for me is huge, like, I feel like communicating with the community is one of the biggest keys. To having a successful school.
So as a follow-up to that, you know, um. I'm gonna stick with the turf field example, just because it's something that we can work from. Um, as like a good example to understand. That was something that we did a lot of community outreach to um, take in public opinion about. And see what really mattered to people and to figure out, to solve some of the problems that had come up that people had mentioned. Um, in sort of a broad outreach and one of them was not having a complete campus where kids could walk out and feel like. Two things, one, that they could be proud of the place, you know, of the school that they were, you know, the field that they were playing on compared to other schools. And the other was being able to walk out the back door and see a girl's soccer game or see a football game or see, you know, soccer. And um, it was something that I didn't necessarily feel. It wasn't my passion, it wasn't where I, like, as far as what I'm connected to, it was not something that um, that I personally wanted to champion. But it meant listening to the community and, and hearing what the priorities were. And then advocating for that, because it was something that mattered to other people. So, is that something that you're prepared to do? Because there's an idea of like, the, what you're saying is that. People feel disconnected and um, they don't believe that the system is working for them. And then, is there a sense of? A willingness to sort of look at what, cuz one of the things you said about, you know. Why don't we represent the community more? I think a lot of people who have been involved in the school advocacy early on realized that trust was fully broken with. Communities of color here in a lot of ways and that white people coming in and trying to. Create that and say, you know, trust us, like, that wasn't going to work, but what was going to work was creating systems that could be trusted. And people who could be trusted and putting leadership in that could be trusted. So, do you feel like that's something you would be prepared to communicate? If you see that, that that's true here? Like, if your, if your experience is, like, you're seeing things on the ground that are um, consistent with the things you might have hoped for. To meet the district where it is currently, rather than what necessarily your direct experience was a few years ago.
Um, yes, do, only because it's not just about me, you know what I mean, it is about a whole entire community. But um, to add to everything you just said, referring to leadership, et cetera, if you were really connecting with the community. You would know that when you walk out that back door of the high school, you still see soccer games, that's where they played. And again, just to touch on the turf field thing, with three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I just want you to understand how many different kind of things you could have done to impact the community. Instead of one thing that we already have two of. We have two football fields.
Can I, can I ask a question on that, cuz I'm not too clear? Yeah, so, so, John, I mean, I, I actually, you know, I was in those meetings with Kristen and, um, you know, we were presented some options. I mean, some, um, some options, some conversations on that and, and. And, you know, the turf field, initially, not all of us were, were on board with it. Um, but, you know, uh, you know, the, the walking out and seeing soccer games thing. Um, you know, i- it is a matter of perspective, so, you know, I know you saw soccer games out there. Um, we were, uh, we were, um, explaining perspectives of. Yes, there's soccer games, but there are soccer games that also get canceled, um, because that area has poor drainage.
Well, the, the girl's soccer games always got canceled.
Yes, and, and, yes, and, and that, and that because that area had poor drainage, your options were very limited. You, um, you know, the, 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 the engineering side of that is, is for areas like that, is you put in turf. So, it was much more expensive, there were some, actually, some also, some concerns of the safety of turf. And we, 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 we addressed those as well, but there was an equity issue in terms of that. And it was, it was a price tag, I admit that. Um, and we, we, we always have what we call competing interests. So, and, and I'm not, and I'm not debating that, that which one's more important than the other. And, 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 you know, here, I think it'll take us until two more days of meetings to, to explain all that. But, uh, I mean, not to explain that, but to, to have that debate, cuz I think we can definitely. The, um, you know, that, that, you know, when you come with, when you come across these competing interests. And you have an opportunity to do something, um, that was, that was an opportunity that we took. Um, you know, and, and I will own that decision as well, cuz I supported it in the end. Um, and if, and if, and if I, and if for some reason I've dissatisfied the community, um, you know, I want the community to tell me. Um, but at the time, there, there was an equity component to that as well, um, and it was something to improve it.
Yeah, um, me personally, like, when it comes to equity. I, how does that seem fair? That, like, as in, like, I, I don't know why I can't, okay, I can hear you now, but as in, like. It's just, would, would, like, you're impacting a whole entire community with a recreation center. You're impacting one soccer team with a turf field. You know what I mean, like?
I, yeah, no, that's, that's a good question, that's a very good question. So, what happens is this, this, we made sure that this turf field is not just a soccer field anymore. We made sure that this, this, this turf field, um, does other sports as well, you know, we try. Yeah, we try to maximize what we spent on it, also Hammond Field, we don't own Hammond Field, I don't know if you're aware of that. And that was an issue for us, um, the deed is written in a way that the city owns it. But the city allow, um, must have allowances for the school to use it. So, for us to spend money on, on property we don't own is another issue. That we came across when we're looking for opportunities. So, there is, there is a weird de- deed restriction on Hammond Field and we don't own Hammond Field. I know it looks like we do, cuz that's where we used to play, I mean, that's, that, that's where all the, all the VHS basket, uh, football games are played, right? But we actually don't own it, so, um, you know, do we put money into something, you know, on, on something that we don't own? And we can't make all the decisions on and we can't manage it, um, you know, um, hire staff to maintain it, all that stuff. You know, or do we invest into a turf field to address another problem as well? Um, bring the high school back into, back behind the high, uh, bring them, sorry, the football.
Keep everything at the high school.
Yeah, so that, so that the kids.
On top of that was the genesis of that idea was when the, um, when we did bring lights in to have, to bring homecoming back. We brought lights into Hammond Field, we paid extra for lights. And then the experience of having a homecoming and a night game was something that got the community really excited. And then became something that we started getting requests for, so renting lights didn't make sense, we wanted to be able to bring night games, not just to. Not just to football, but to girl's soccer, to boy's soccer, to lacrosse, to any, you know, thing that would play on that field, on, on a field. And not just one group, and so that was the genesis of that discussion. And it was during a, something called a capital plan project. Um, we don't, I don't think we could ever build a rec center, because we're not in the position to do that. We wouldn't get those funds approved, there are certain things that you can use capital funds from the state for. And it was in addition to building a brand new home and careers room at the middle school. Um, putting in a students with disabilities classroom that had access to the outside, those were all parts of the same project. But I think what I'm hearing is none of that reached as far, that communication reached as far as it needed to. And it contributed to a cynicism that already exists, and so we need to do better. Um, I don't wanna interrupt, but I also wanna make sure that, um, we are getting questions to John. So that we can um, judge him as an applicant and then not missing an opportunity to interview our last candidate. So are there any other questions for John regarding?
I'd like to make a, a quick statement, John, this is Alyssa Betterfield. Um, you know, when I hear people question the turf field and I hear you're questioning how it helps the community. Um, I, I was not an athlete in high school and, um, you know, I don't really care that much about sports for myself. But I do know that when a school district invests in its fac- facilities in this way, like a turf field. It does a lot for the school district and, which in turn does do a lot for the community. Um, a strong school district makes a stronger community. So, when, when, um, a school invests in something like a turf field, which is a, a type of facility. That most schools in our area already have, it makes us more attractive to great faculty and great staff. Which in turn helps our students, it also gives our sports teams, um. And our school in general, a better reputation around the county and the greater community. So, um, I, 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 it, it, it pains me to hear you say that you don't think it benefits the community. When it, it really does in a lot of more abstract ways. So, I guess my question for you is. Do you think you, you'll be able to see those perspectives and understand those perspectives? When it comes to, let's say, our next capital project, which we are beginning to plan for now?
Of course, I will be able to do that, like, and my whole point is, is, it's not about the field. It is just simply about what if the school district invested into their community? I think your misunderstanding is like. What a recreation center would do, meaning like with programs as of after school programs, summer programs. There's a long list that I can go down, but my, my, my whole point was just simply investing in the community. That's it, like, that, that's my whole point, like, I'm not disregarding your decision, I'm not telling you that your decision was wrong. I'm just telling you that there are far more important things going on that you are clearly disconnected from.
I, I agree with you that there are things that we are disconnected from. But our first priority and our first commitment is to our students in the Beacon City Schools. Um, and as was mentioned before, a recreation center does not fall under the purview of.
How is that if your students will be going to that program?
Can I, can I interject just a real question, question, cuz I, and I know we need to move on as well. I think, I mean, in a way, this gets back to my first question. Is, is I think all of us oftentimes refer to the community in Beacon, we talk about our commitment to the community. And, and while I, I fully, um, support and work towards a unified community. I think the reality is, is all of us, uh, when we say we're referring to the community, in some ways, they're actually really talking about our connections with a different community. Right, I think we all probably bring nine different communities when we really have a vision of who we connect with. We aspire to connect with everyone, so in a way, I'm like, I'm even hearing this back and forth. I suspect that, John, when you talk about your, uh, the needs of the community, that you might actually be talking about. The people who you know and the people you interact to and the people you are working with, which are literally different people in the same city. So, I mean, this is kind of the value, what we're getting into is the, the back and forth of democracy. And while this is not the kind of debates we often get into in the board level, it's certainly the kind of things that happen in committee. And these are the kind of decisions that, that get worked out as you become familiar with what we can do and can't do and how we prioritize stuff. Anyway, that was just my, my take as I hear this unfold into a, a very interesting interview.
Does anyone else have any questions for John about his board candidacy? Thank you so much, John.
Thank you, I appreciate it either way, thank you so much.
Um, Jasmine, are you still with us? Hi Jasmine, um, what do you wanna tell us a little bit about yourself and what you think you'd bring to the board?
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, um, so a little bit about me, I grew up in Beacon. Uh, my family moved here in nineteen ninety-nine, I went to fifth grade in. South Avenue School, my teacher was Mr. Henry, he actually, um, moved up with us as we. Uh, went to sixth grade and seventh grade and everything and. I'm one of the Beacon alumnis who graduated from the then New Beacon High School. Uh, we were the first class, two thousand and six. Um, I remember Mr. Mancary being the principal and everything, it was a really great time. Um, what else about me? My daughter, she's in third grade, she goes to New Covenant Learning Center in Beacon. That's a private Christian charter school. A lot of the times, we don't have a lot of the school board help, but if we need something done, we get it done. Um, last year was the first year that we started to open up and do more fundraisers. We actually had a children's gala at the Q W L next to the Beacon High School. And it was a beautiful event, there was a lot of different people, a lot of different kids that I didn't know. So it was nice to meet other parents, um, from the public schools and everything. I had a short job at the Montessori School in Beacon. I was first at the daycare part and then I trans- transferred over to the first, second and third grade. Um, before COVID and everything. And then seeing those children as well, that's a different light and you would think. Um, Montessori School, everything is great and the kids don't go through anything and that's the furthest from the truth. A lot of them went through a lot of different things, um, and I was there as a safe place. I like to call myself that, um, with the kids and even with older children. I have a god sister who is in Beacon High School, she's a senior. And I know a few of the children who graduated and some of the, um, kids in the Beacon High School. Right now, so I feel like I have kind of a more insider type of thing. What interests me is the, um, cyberbullying pretty much. I've never been cyberbullied, I've been bullied in person, um, I think that's different. in person. Um, I think that's different. Um, but I know what it does to the psyche. I know, um, that you can keep it to yourself if you don't feel safe with any of the teachers or anyone who is an adult. So I think that would interest me the most. Um, and also health and wellness. I know I'm kind of getting into the questions. I don't want to keep you guys too late. Um, the health and wellness part also interests me as well. Um, and trying to connect the, the charter school, uh, New Covenant Learning Center and the Montessori School, um, all together with the public schools. So the Beaconites can really be together with the schools, um, and just kind of knowing where the head is for the school board. This is actually the first time I'm hearing about it because, like I said, a lot of the times we just kind of did what we needed to do, um, especially in terms of funding. Um, so yeah.
Do you have any questions for the board, Jasmine?
Um, I think my biggest question would be, how would we, um, join together the Montessori schools and the, um, the Christian schools together that are in Beacon with the public schools, like having different events together. Um, so they all can know each other and all operate on the same level. Um, especially with all of this happening with COVID and now coming back and, um, trying to reassess how to do everything. How can we all come together and really be a tight-knit community when it comes to schools that are not the public schools and everything?
That's a good question. I don't think we've, uh, I don't think we've been able to answer that question yet. It's come up a few times actually in policy committees.
That's true. That's true. Yeah. Uh, does anyone else, any other board members want to speak to that?
I think what you have to keep in mind Jasmine is that the public schools are the four elementary schools, the middle school and the high school. With the public school doesn't have any, uh, jurisdiction or decision-making rights for the private schools. The private schools could take students from, out of the Beacon City School District for their education piece and that's coming to private piece. There is a little funding piece that goes through, through some federal grants, um, that, that we're, we have to allot monies, uh, funds to for the private schools or charter schools in the district. But besides that, it's really two separate identities.
Gotcha. Okay. Our primary role as members of the Board of Education is to promote public schools.
Go ahead, Anthony.
Um, yeah, all that is true. I'm, I'm just, I just want to not end in such a sour note that, you know, you know, if there is a possible abilities, I mean, I'm definitely open-minded, um, on that. But you know, there are restrictions as to what we can do.
Right. Like, we're not throwing shade on any of the other schools. New Covenant's my neighbor. I love, I love, I, they always let my kids join in the bike party when they close the block.
Oh, nice.
My daughter went to the Montessori School for a while. So I feel like it's more just in this role that we have, like our function here. And so there's, you can have a different function in the community where you do, um, volunteering and create events and connecting. Just in this particular role, what we do here is focused on developing a budget, um, goals for the public school. I, I, I do have a question for you. Um, what made you decide, as somebody who had gone through our schools, to put your child in, um, a different school?
Um, I think with a few different experiences that I've had, um, and I've had, I put it in my application, um, uh, experience that I didn't put in was, um, I don't think she's there now because she was kind of older when I was younger, but the way she would treat a lot of us, um, it just wasn't a fair dynamic. And because we were kids, we didn't know to speak up or even to tell our parents because our parents never came in and vouched for us. Cause we didn't know. We just thought it was the norm. Like, we knew that it was something different, but we couldn't put our finger on it because we were kids. Um, and then a different situation that happened was in high school, um, I was in advanced math. Me and another friend of mine, we were the only two African Americans in the class. And as the class was going, the teacher really just kept nudging me first to go into the lower level math. And, um, I would say for about two, maybe three months, he just kept nudging. And I felt like because he was the teacher, obviously he knows best. That's what I thought. Um, so I went into that class and then I found out that that class was predominantly black, um, and a few other Spanish children. And then I want to say maybe a month and a half later, my friend joined me from that class. So that class then turned into a predominantly white school, well, white class. So, um, just kind of dealing with that, I know that, I hate to use this word, but just to use it, hate has no, um, age requirement. And you really don't know which teacher unfortunately wants to put a damper on a child. So when I put her in there in New Covenant, I knew that that was never the case. It was never gonna be the case. Um, they treat her and the other kids like their own. Um, their granddaughter is in there and you probably wouldn't even know until after school when she starts calling them grandma and grandpa. Um, you wouldn't know because they treat all of them as their own. I actually run the PTA Facebook page for a lot of it, um, just keeping them up to date, the parents, because everybody's working, everybody's doing their own thing. And, um, when you said the tight-knit group of the school board, that kind of put in my head, like, because it's only a few of the parents that come for the PTA and we are kind of the deciding factors on a lot of the events and the funding and if we're gonna do, um, any fundraisers for anything, it's, it's kind of just us. And it's, I would say it's, yeah, it's about the same number, nine, 10, um, 10 on a good day, honestly. But yeah, I think with that, that's mostly the thing that really came to my mind when she went there, like that wouldn't be a problem and she would have fairness and, um, just with her studies, that they're very fast. I, in no shade to the public schools, because I don't know how they are now. It's been so long. Um, but they're very like, very fast. The second week she was there, she was reading, um, full sentences. So that's what I loved about it as well. Like, that's not even, that's not even a question on the academics and also there's really no altercations between the children. If there's any talk back or any of that stuff, they nip it in the bud that day. The parents come in, um, no excuses, get there, have a meeting, squash it. And I love that about them. So with all of that, it was like, she's staying in there until she graduates out.
So what aspects from a board level, if you have influence on the school that you graduated from, what would you, from policy, from training of teachers, from goals that you set, what would you like to see in the public school for students graduating? Let's say, what you, what did you wish was there for you when you were a student?
I would say, um, I'm not going to say that there were no teachers that had that type of compassion, but I would say that it is compassion-led teaching, um, and that the teachers have the emotional intelligence, if they're having a bad day, that they can kind of, um, confide in someone else, a different grown-up and everything, and not have to take it out on children or not have to, um, not saying that that happens, because I, again, I, I don't know. Um, but just everyone, like in the perfect world, everyone having the emotional intelligence and compassion and that we all can be a safe space, you know? I am crazy enough to believe that, at, um, all the teachers can be a safe space, that all the teachers, um, can care if they want to. Um, I've had a few different teachers, Mr. Henry, Mr. Taban, um, God rest his soul, Mrs. Clemmons, um, like I've had different teachers who cared and it really, it really helped. Like, I don't remember what they said, but I do remember how they made me feel. And that's what's most important. That's what the kids need, quite honestly. It's a very sensitive time. Um, like you can get called names for pretty much anything, for voicing your opinion, for, um, speaking up, pretty much anything. Um, so I know that the sensitivity being on this side, being an African-American woman, I know the sensitivity of a lot of the topics that are now being brought up. And I feel like, um, I can be a bridge for that and having the emotional intelligence and be able to listen to people with compassion and say with honesty that I understand.
Thank you, Jasmine. I wanted to just, I don't really have a question. I just want to really appreciate the, the statement you just said, where you talked about you don't, you don't remember everything your teacher said, but you remember how they make you feel. Uh, I think it's really easy for us to forget that. And that's a really, really, really powerful reminder. Uh, so I appreciate you, you reminding us that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Jasmine?
I, I think Kristen stole my question there. So, um.
Did I steal it or did I ask it better?
So, um, no, but is, I mean, is there anything you want to add from the thousand-foot view? I guess, you know, how you would set the tone for the district?
Um, I guess the cliche answer would be the diversity. Um, I would have that, of course. But then also, I feel like that I would have a fresh perspective on, um, the different things that are going on within the city that I've dealt with sexism and racism and any type of hate. And, um, quite honestly, it is what it is. And whatever goals that I have, it's gonna get done regardless of how you feel. Um, and I feel like that us being a small city, like, we can have so much power and just being that voice of reason and like that motivation, like, like we can get it done. Any goal that is on that list, we can get it done. And I know that what you said with the finances, a lot of the times the Montessori schools and the charter schools, but even if, um, we have a different event that is for everyone, you know, I know Frankie Ryan, I don't know if you guys know her, but she does a lot of local events. Um, and she's pretty much a local superstar. She just opened up, she co-owns a, um, restaurant in Poughkeepsie. So, and she grew up in Beacon as well. So, and I know a few other event planners. So I feel like we can just, like, really get together and love on each other and have that compassion. And when that happens, I feel like the trust is easier. It's easier to trust. So I feel like my part would be, be more innovative to find different areas of, um, how we can create those levels of trust within each different, um, arena. Teachers, the board, the students from each age. I really feel like that can happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jasmine? Okay. Thank you so much, Jasmine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, it's great to hear from everyone. And again, I really, I think we're all very grateful for your applications and your willingness to participate in this volunteer unpaid position. It, there, it is rewarding, although it's also hard at times. Um, and I appreciate all your comments and insights. Um, and I actually encourage the people who are in the not chosen to consider running in May, because we are always looking for new board members. So, um, please consider this just a first step to participation one way or the other. Um, we are gonna, um, keep moving now and, um, we'll, and we'll, we'll talk about this in our second exec. Um, we will not make a decision about it tonight. So, um, so don't worry about that. Anthony, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, on the application, it says itself, any questions asked the board, you know, then our email's there. But I, I do want to emphasize that again, that, you know, even if, even after this whole process is over, I mean, we definitely want to hear different perspectives. Definitely use that email address to ask us questions or bring up conversations and, and definitely use the, the, the time allotted for public speaking and stuff like that.
Absolutely. I mean, this is, this is a process that's made better with participation. So please, please do. Um, it is 10:30. We have two other items on our unfinished business, um, discussion of topics for agenda, um, for meeting with the city. We do not have a date for that meeting. Um, I'm going to suggest that we table it until the next meeting because I'm, I'm certain that the, so can I have a motion to table, uh, item 10.02?
Anthony motions table.
Second.
James, seconds, comments and questions? All in favor? Opposed? Passes eight zero.
Aye for me.
That was a, that was a yes? Alyssa, are you opposing?
No, I'm, I, yes.
Okay. Um, and then discussion of the Board of Ed statement. Um, again, I feel this is really important. I also feel like it's totally ongoing and I really want to give attention to the discussion of board applicants, but I, I leave it to the board. Does anyone want to make a motion to table the discussion?
I'll move to table the discussion.
Laura?
Yeah.
I think we can do that.
Okay. Craig, I'm going to take that as the second.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're tabling the what? I'm sorry.
The Board of Education statement, which was a, an advocacy statement to.
The one Craig ran?
Uh, no, actually.
The one, the other one. Okay, sorry.
That's the federal and the state one, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
They'll be a problem the next time.
Right. We will, I'm sure I'll have something to add to it. Um, so, okay. Eric, are there any comments or questions about it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. So, next is the consent agenda. Let me see if I can find the language there. I keep telling myself I'm going to memorize it, but so far I haven't. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue.
I'd like to poll 10, 11.06.
Anything else to be pulled?
I would like to poll 11.03, um, not the whole thing. Hold up, uh, 11.03. P.
P. Anything else to be pulled? So can I have a motion to approve 11.01 to 11.07, less 11.03P and 11.06?
So move. So move. Anthony seconds.
Anthony, seconds. Are there comments or questions?
Thank you for 11.07.
Yeah, drones. That'll be interesting. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Passes eight zero. Can I have a motion to approve 11.03P? Can I have a motion to approve 11.03P?
Man, I think I pulled the wrong one.
Well, we still need to approve 11.03P.
Yeah. I don't think there is 11.03P.
There's no 11.03P. I meant 11.04P, but.
Oh, I was wondering about that, okay.
There's no, it's okay, so there's nothing to approve, because there's no 11.03P.
Okay. Do you have a question about 11.04?
Well, the other question I had is that it was a stipend for the, for the sports coaches. I wanted to know if there was anything put in place for, if the season didn't happen or cut short, is it gonna be, like, I think that last year we had to work out something with that, with the union. So I was wondering if we did something to put in place prior to appointing the stipends.
No, we didn't. We would, we would go back to it if, if the season was cut short and discuss it with the union then.
Okay, I mean, there's nothing to vote on, it was already approved, so.
Can I have a motion to approve 11.06?
Then moved.
Second?
Second.
Laura? Comments or questions?
Just wanted to ask about this particular item.
About the claims?
Yep, the claims audit report.
Is there a specific question?
I just wanted to get some insight, there are large checks and it's always helpful to have some background for the public.
I'm pulling it up right now, Kristen, hang on one second.
No, no problem.
So are you asking about any specific warrant? So there's one with two, two checks on it?
Yeah.
Did 25?
The purpose was and.
So the two checks, one of the checks was for PPE in various aspects, also machines that we purchased to clean and some of the thermometers that we purchased to also use for children as they were entering school.
Is this the air guys?
Air guys, yes, yes. Painting company was, we had the gym painted this year, which is a big undertaking. We also had the floor redone in the gym. So that's part of that, we had some other areas.
Where was, which building, the high school?
The high school, yep. I will look at the other warrant real quick.
No, just those two.
Oh, is that it? Okay.
Those were the first two checks that came up that were significant.
I know you've been asking for a list of what we've spent and we're in the process of getting that all together. I wanted to make sure it was complete before I shared it with the board.
Sure, and then I know that time is sort of of the essence, especially, I know we were competing against folks for PPE and that protective stuff, so I'm going to assume there wasn't a competitive bidding process that was involved in getting those materials.
So part of, part of the State Education Department was to allow us to not follow the usual protocol for procurement because we need to get PPE here and we basically just bought it when we could get it. That won't, that won't be the case going forward after this. But now, you know, we were able to just get whatever materials we needed.
Sure, and then what about painting? Do we do a competitive bidding process for that?
Painting, I, I don't think that it's usually services, contractual services would be more of an RFP than a bid process.
Okay, and is that our, that's our policy?
Well, that's actually how we have to do it. Our RFP is for contractual services, we do have it in the policy, yes, in the purchasing policy.
I had a question.
Yes.
So on page two of the 2018, one, the August 2021, the, there's a lot of names, personal names. Usually I'm used to seeing a lot of companies and mix of companies and names. Is there a reason why there's like two and a quarter pages of personal names on this?
I'm sorry, Anthony, which one, are you talking about the August?
The August one, yes, the August one. Page two to page four.
So there were a lot of refunds that were due to people. So there were school lunch refunds that wouldn't have been in this, it's general fund. There were pool memberships that we had collected, pool and fitness, that we had refunded to people as well. There were some student thing, student fees for SATs that we had collected prior that we didn't use. So there was a lot of refunds that we needed to give back to parents and kids for things that they didn't use because we were closed for COVID.
Oh, thank you. That's why it's unusual.
Yes, we don't normally do this at all.
Are there any other questions? All in favor of, I lost it, 11.06?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes eight zero. Could I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss applicants for the board vacancy?
Anthony, so moved.
Second.
Alyssa, second. Comments or questions?
I just want to say, as somebody who applied for a board position and had to go through a similar process, I know that it's very hard to put yourself out there in this way and that in some ways, the process of running for office, which I encourage everybody to do, prepares you a little bit more, because you have to sort of keep dipping your toe in the pond of like going out and talking to people and actually, when you get to the end of it, feel a lot more confident because you've, you know, sort of exhausted of the outreach and you feel like you're really speaking from a position of having put yourself out there so many times, asked for signatures and things like that, it's a little more comfortable. So I just want to say, I really appreciate everybody that has put themselves out there in that way and, and understand how challenging it can be.
I'd love to just add on to that, sorry, I'd love to just add on to that, the reminder that May is just around the corner. And if you're interested enough to step up here, thank you so much and start campaigning, because you've got, you've got six months to get elected.
I just want to point out, Meredith, so we don't expect to make a decision after the executive session.
No, we did, the board will not return, we do not expect to take, we will not be taking action after this.
So we'll adjourn at executive session.
Exactly, yes.
It's just so that folks aren't still waiting here for us to come back.
Everybody go home. Any other comments or questions?
And if you do want to stay on, that will prepare you to be on the board.
Not recommended.
Maybe argue with a friend, that'll help.
I do, I do want to add my thanks to all the applicants as well. I mean, it's actually more refreshing to talk to people who wants to be on the board than it is to look at a ballot of names that I may or may not know.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes eight zero. So the board will adjourn in executive session, will not return. Thanks, everyone, have a great night and thanks again to the applicants.
Night, thank you.
Night. Nice to meet everyone.